Good evening. My name is Barbara Nickel. I'm president of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area. We are here tonight to have a candidate forum for the candidates for District Six in Pomona. We are so happy that all of these candidates have agreed to be here and are sharing all of this with all of you. So I'm going to start by asking the candidates to give two-minute opening statements. And I'm going to start with Lorraine. Lorraine, if you would make your opening statement now. Unmute yourself first, please.
Hello. Thank you for allowing me to be here. My name is Lorraine Canales, and I am honored to run for City Council D six. Over thirty years, I have been a high school counselor and teacher. I have worked closely with many families and have gained unique valuable insight into our community needs. I grew up in East LA with my parents and five siblings. My parents instilled in me the value of community and the importance of giving back and hard work. They emphasize that hard work will always win. I moved to Pomona twenty-four years ago, purchased my home, and raised my two children. My daughter is a staff sergeant in the United States Marine Corps, and my son is a jazz musician and college student. I attended Cal State Los Angeles and earned a degree in early childhood education, a teaching credential in teaching, and a credential in the PPS counseling credential. I have been an active member within various organizations committed to making a positive impact. I am the president of the Optimist Club of Pomona. I'm a member of Rotary. I'm a member of Assistance League of Pomona. I'm also a member of the Eagles and Delta Kappa Gamma. I will collaborate with local state leaders and work on improving revenue to improve city services and ensure responsible use of our tax dollars. I will work closely with our police and fire and to demand and tackle community violence and crime and increase safety in our community. Other critical issues I will address will be the infrastructure and maintenance, fair wages, jobs and trades, and education. I will be a responsible representative who will hold City Hall accountable and be transparent to the residents of Pomona. Our community deserves clean, safe neighborhoods.
Thank you, Lorraine. Miranda, your opening statement, please.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so very much to the League of Women Voters for providing us this opportunity to introduce ourselves to the residents of District Six. I am so excited to be here. I have lived in Pomona for the last twenty-three years. I am a graduate of Pomona High School. Go Red Devils! And I am also currently, right now, I am a professor at Cal State LA. The way that I came to Pomona was via the foster care system. I came here at the age of fifteen, and this was after bouncing around a lot of different foster homes. I had moved around at least ten different foster homes, and Pomona became my forever home. And that's why I'm excited to run, because Pomona provided me stability, and I want to be a part of the future of its own stability. So I'm excited to be here. I am currently a mother. I've raised my daughter here since 2004. She was born at Ponte Valley Hospital, and she's currently a college student. I also am excited to share that I'm a board member of Pomona United for Stabilized Housing, and I have been fighting on those issues. I am a former commissioner for the Cultural and Arts Commission, and I'm also a former commissioner for the first ever created Police Oversight Commission for the city of Pomona. Very excited to be here, excited to share with you who I am, a little bit about my platform, and why I am the best candidate for this race today. Thank you so very much for this opportunity.
Thank you, Miranda. Glenda, your opening statement, please.
Well, I would like to echo everyone and thanking you for putting this on. My name is Glenda Barías, and I am running for Pomona City Council, District Six. And I was born in East Los Angeles to immigrant parents. And it's from my parents that I learned my work ethic and my drive to better my situation in life. I share that with my siblings. So much like my parents, who often had to move around in order to find work opportunities, to find stable, affordable housing for us, I carried that on as an adult and always looking for a way to make a change in my life that would set me up for success, much like other people and especially the people here in Pomona. So when I finally came to Pomona, about five years ago, I was actually in one of the lowest places of my life. I was struggling to put myself through school full-time. I went to Chaffey College. I was struggling to find steady work and bouncing around in the gig economy, much like a lot of the people that I know. And I was grieving a very personal loss that left me absolutely devastated. And it was here in Pomona that I was able to connect with people, the community that really banded together to bring me out of that dark place and help me be the person that I am today. And because of that, I want to give back to the community. I'm running because the people of Pomona deserve opportunities and deserve to preserve the community that they have right now and to make it better. So I'm running to fix our roads. I'm running to bring economic development to the area. And I'm also running to make sure that we have safe green spaces and parks for the residents of Pomona to enjoy. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The first question that I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask of Miranda, and this is the question. What issues do you feel are unique to District Six, and how would you address them?
Thank you so very much, Barbara, for that question. There are some issues that I feel are very unique to the district. One of them is that we currently have been having a lot of particular issues with a lot of blight, where there's a lot of vacant buildings in this district, which has led to easily places where a lot of people have been setting up encampments. There's about three or four hot pockets in this district. And I think that right now, we have a really great opportunity to be able to put forward solutions with our partners on a regional and a state level to be able to address this, because we know that the issues that are connected to blight, vacancy, and these buildings are not unique to Pomona, okay? They are issues that are taking place across the county and across the state. But Pomona can actually be a champion, not only in the regional level, but also in California by putting forward models about how we address these issues. I will also say another thing is that we have a lot of seniors who are in this district and who are facing housing insecurity. And I think that is one of the things that I would like to be able to address as a future elected official, because while housing is expensive, it also is directly impacting people on different levels.
Thank you. Glenda, same question. Do you want me to repeat the question?
No, thank you. So one of the things that makes District Six unique is that we have the Gold Line coming to Pomona through District Six, and yet we have yet to build a comprehensive plan around that. This, it's going to be an amazing opportunity for Pomona and District Six. But what we have is, it can also bring issues if we're not careful and we're not prepared. So to address this, I want to create a comprehensive transit-oriented destination plan that uses the development of the Gold Line to spur economic development and revitalization to the area that desperately needs it. It should have a housing development component as well as business developments, such as restaurants and shops and services to support the increase in riders that are going to be coming to and from Pomona. But we also have to be prepared for the parking issues and public safety concerns that are going to be involved. Because when this becomes a stop here in Pomona, there are going to be a bunch of people coming in and out that might cause some issues for us. So we need to make sure that we are investing and working with our public safety officials to address those concerns ahead of time. That means Pomona Police Department, as well as the sheriffs who cover the Gold Line, and making sure that we are planning how we're going to address parking and making that accessible and safe.
Thank you so much. Question two, Lorraine, you will answer first, and here is the question. What is your top priority for Pomona, and what are two concrete steps?
I, by breath, have Lorraine answered the last question.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Lorraine, you should have raised your hand and stopped me or whatever. So do you need me to repeat question one? Question one is, what issues do you feel are unique to District Six, and how would you address them? Unmute yourself, please.
All right. I think for District Six safety, I've lived here for twenty-five years, and I think that the safety is the number-one concern in my community. The response time is a major concern because of, there's more, I guess, higher crimes in other districts, and so we're sort of not receiving the, our response time is very weak. And so when things are happening, we just had a neighborhood watch, and a lot of the members of my community are very concerned because the police do not come up here as quickly as they should, or it's hours later that they will respond to our calls. Because I think a lot of the businesses, like Miranda Scheffelt had said, a lot of the businesses are closing down here. So what's happening is the homeless are starting to encamp in these businesses. And the Hart Team is doing an amazing job, but they're coming right back because they have nowhere else to go. And I think the services are not really addressing the concerns of those that are mentally ill and drug addicted. We lack businesses here in District Six. As I'm walking and talking to many of the members in the community, especially the seniors, they're dealing with the price and utility. And so some of us are living on budgets. And so as the budgets, as the utilities increase, it's harder to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Lorraine. Okay, question two, we're actually going to start with Glenda. So Glenda, what is your top priority for Pomona, and what are two concrete steps you can take as a city council member to address that priority?
So my top priority for Pomona is economic development. And that means that we build a strong financial foundation in order to fund the work that we need done here in Pomona. My approach is a holistic one, because in order to spur economic development, we need to deal with the very real issues of public safety, planning, and creating policy that makes it easy for businesses to come into Pomona. So I would address that by working with city staff to identify additional resources to specifically target safety issues for businesses. And the second thing that I would do was work collaboratively with my colleagues to develop a realistic policy that helps businesses open as fast as possible in Pomona. I have been speaking with small business owners in the area, and a common theme that I've heard is that it takes way too long for businesses to open. Some even telling me that it's taken them a year. When the cities around us are opening up businesses in as little as forty-five days, it really isn't surprising that we have vacant storefronts and buildings. So with that, I'm hoping that we can fund the issues that we're talking about, like public safety for the general public. That revenue comes from economic development.
Thank you. Lorraine, question two, do you want me to repeat the question? What is your top priority for Pomona, and what are two concrete steps you can take as a city council member to address that priority?
I also agree with the economic growth is my main concern. We are losing many businesses, and the landlords are giving up and selling their properties due to the rise in costs to maintain their properties. We need to have better opportunities to keep our businesses growing. We definitely need to generate revenue in order to bring more businesses to our city for safety, infrastructure maintenance, programs for youth, seniors, veterans, and people with disabilities. We need to continue to work with our government and regional and state leaders to bring programs that will bring more money to our city. One of the things that I think we need to do is develop a better business-friendly environment, so more investors will want to come to Pomona. More business will bring better jobs and better wages and more revenue, and for Pomona residents will want to keep their money here in Pomona. Another goal would be to develop opportunities for city employees to feel more empowered by providing training programs to help streamline the process for business owners, property owners, and residential concerns.
Thank you. Miranda, question two, do you want me to repeat it?
No, I'm okay. I'm ready. Thank you for the question, Barbara. For me, one of the things that are most important, my top priority is housing. Pomona currently has about forty-seven percent of the folks who live here are renters. I myself am a renter here in Pomona. And thankfully, you know, I am able to get by with what I have to take care of myself and my family. But I know a lot of the people I've been talking to in the district have not been able to get by because of the price of the rent right now. And I am the only one in this race that has been working actively on the issues related to housing in the city of Pomona. As a board member of Pomona United for Stabilized Housing, I was able to successfully be able to put forward, in collaboration with our city council, to put forward a rent cap of four percent so that landlords are not able to raise the rent no more than that. I know that a lot of people are hurting, and particularly the seniors that are in this district who are on fixed incomes are hurting. So for me, I would want to continue to do the work that I have been doing already around housing and then extending these policies that we have. Right now, it's a temporary ordinance. I would love to make it a permanent ordinance for the city of Pomona. And then I would also like to continue to actively be in conversations with folks who are facing issues around housing and also rising property taxes for our residents in District Six.
Thank you. We're ready for question three, right? And question three, Lorraine, you are going to begin this question. And here is the question. Pomona is in its first year of a ten-year contract with Athens Services for Waste Disposal. What is your opinion of how this contract is being handled, and did the city make the right choice?
As I walk and talk to many people, I know that the Athens contract is a contract that is set for ten years and maybe twenty. I don't think that that was a great decision. I think that maybe a contract for maybe two years or one year to evaluate, you know, the outcome of them coming into our city. The businesses and landlords got really hit hard. And it's affecting even, you know, with rent control, because for some of the landlords, it's very difficult because they're having to be under the rent control, but yet they're also asked to fix the property. Utility prices have gone up, wages have gone up. The cost to take care of property has been very difficult. And what's happening is that a lot of our businesses and our landlords are selling because they can't afford to stay because of the rise of the, not only just the Athens tax, but it's just been a concern that Athens, I think, has not been a good decision for our city because it's affecting everyone. It's affecting the businesses, the landlords, and our people of Pomona.
Thank you. Miranda, same question.
I think, Barbara, I think that Pomona was put in a very difficult position when it came to the Athens trash services. I think for me, due to the passing of Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, Pomona needed to be in compliance with this recently passed legislation. And because of that, they had to be able to find a trash servicing agency that could be able to help them meet the compliance of that particular bill. And so the one thing that I will say is that, in a lot of ways, Pomona was forced to have to find a trash service to help them to be in compliance. I also will say that I would have liked to see the experience be a little bit more robust, because even as this was being implemented, there was a lot of confusion for residents, right? There was a lot of confusion about, well, are we going to be double billed? Or what's up with my bill? How is this happening? I think we could have taken a little bit more time to make sure that residents were fully aware of what was taking place. And that's something I would have wanted and I would have pushed for, being on the council.
Thank you, Miranda. Glenda, same question.
Thank you for that. So similar to Miranda's answer, yes, I understand that the city of Pomona actually had to comply with state law that was very specific on how we have to handle our green waste and recyclables. And the council went with a contractor that could do that and meet those requirements. The cost is not something that anyone is really a fan of. But the cost to having to update our systems beforehand, had we not gone with another contractor, would have been very expensive. Updating all of our trucks, which were greatly outdated, a truck runs about three hundred thousand dollars apiece, and we would have needed like a new fleet of trucks. So the council made the choice that they needed to, as far as being as fiscally responsible as they could, given the alternative. Now that said, we do have to allow Athens to do their jobs. And as your council member, what I will do is hold them accountable to this contract and providing Pomona with the best service possible. So my commitment is that I work with the rest of the council to provide the appropriate oversight over this ten-year contract to make sure that Athens is providing quality services to the people of Pomona.
Thank you. Question four, we'll start with Miranda this time. Miranda, homelessness has continued to increase year over year. How do you propose to meaningfully address this situation?
Excellent question. That's one of the biggest things that have come up when I've been talking to voters in this district, is the issue of our homeless, houseless community. And I want to say that, again, a lot of times, people want to think that it's a Pomona issue. It's not a Pomona issue. It's an issue that has been taking place across California, across Los Angeles County. For me, the one thing that I feel versus a Los Angeles city and Pomona, we have a unique opportunity, particularly in the district, right? One of the things I want to be able to do as a future council member is to really work harder to get our regional dollars in the city of Pomona and also be able to pull dollars from the state so that we can really create models that can hopefully be able to be used across the county and also across California. Because we have, like I said before, I can tell you right now, four or five pockets where we have our houseless folks at. And with enough attention, and with enough time, and with enough collaboration with our regional and our state partners, we would be able to help find solutions to address this. We're not going to be able to end this overnight, but we could definitely find a way to start practicing how to address it.
Thank you. Glenda, same question.
So the city of Pomona has had success with the Hope for Home and Hart Team. We have seen a growth in homelessness, I think, because our economy has had issues. And my number-one priority, as I've said before, is economic development so that we can tackle some of the underlying economic issues. And as we create more opportunities, then we will generate more tax revenue to support and expand on the successes of the Hope and the Hart Team and their initiatives. It will set us up and put us in a position that we can later on down the road evaluate whether we continue on with those programs or whether we need to go find other innovative solutions to the homeless issue. Now, in the work that I've done over the last eight years with my community activism and work, I have worked already with the different levels of government. So I think that, to echo Miranda, it is important that we're working with the county, the state, and the federal government to bring in funds. Laverne just recently got a grant for their homeless issue, which is very interesting to me, since we often see so many more people hanging out on our side of the border between us and Laverne. So we need access to those dollars to be able to address these issues as well.
Thank you. Lorraine, same question.
Thank you. I am in full support of our Hart Team, but as I investigate and update myself with current research regarding the unhoused, the data focuses on addressing the root of the problem. The research behind homelessness are numerous, from mental health to drug abuse, to lack of financial literacy, to physical and mental abuse, trauma, neglect, and more. We need programs that will provide long-term results that will address the root of the problem and not a temporary fix. Utilizing Measure H and local and state funds, it is vital to create programs that will sustain long-term results. It is crucial that we invest in programs that provide long-term treatment and rehabilitation programs. We need to invest in temporary housing and/or treatment centers that will provide long-term counseling to help individuals stabilize their mental health and/or drug addiction, provide job training and financial literacy. And by providing stability, we can guide these individuals into living a healthy lifestyle. We want to ensure that the unhoused are able to live, not just for the moment, but for long term.
Thank you. Question five, we're going to start this time with Glenda. Glenda, question five is, how do you intend to connect with and serve marginalized communities within Pomona?
That's a great question. So my commitment to the people of Pomona, and one of the things that I've actually been campaigning on is that your council member should be accessible. And that means that meeting people where they are. So I want to bring back district meetings in order to open up lines of communication with myself and the residents here in District Six. We haven't had district meetings in quite some time. And in doing that partnership with the community and bringing the city staff on board so that they can actually hear and what's going on within the district is very important to me. I also want to be able to connect with the very many organizations that are doing great work in Pomona to do just that, which is serve the unserved communities. And working with churches, I'm working with nonprofits, will be able to reach all of the people that need assistance here in the city of Pomona. Myself, as a Latina and a renter, I know that there are issues that some of the other council members might not be focusing on. And that's why we all come to the table. We bring our unique experiences so that we can then address issues. And we know where the people are because we're here of the community. So that's how I would serve the unserved.
Thank you very much. Lorraine, same question.
I think that in working with the marginal communities, I think one thing, they're often left out of making decisions in our community or in decisions that are being made that affect them. I think inclusivity is extremely important. It is critical that we are more cognizant and listen to their concerns and how we can support their needs. Sometimes we may not, you know, if we're not in that community, we may not understand what they are facing. We may not understand the issues that they deal with on a day-to-day basis. We may not understand the issues that they deal with on a daily basis. We need to empower them so that their voices are heard. I would like to create more community meetings at times that this community, which is probably working community, they're, it's not easy for them to attend these meetings. So finding out which day is best for them, maybe a Saturday, not just at a time where they cannot be available, where they can't attend and we can't hear what they have to say. So I think it's important to include them in the process and listen to their voices and let them be heard.
Thank you. Miranda, same question?
Thank you, Barbara. For me, I, when I, when I hear the word marginalized, it's meaning that we are reaching out to a specific demographic of folks that have not either been invited to the table or have not been aware that there is a table that they can go to. So for me, when I'm thinking about our marginalized community, in my first ninety days of being on the city council, I would want to partner with our local colleges so that we can, I'm a big believer of data and being able to have a clear idea, a roadmap of where our communities that are most marginalized are at. I would want to partner with our local colleges in order to put forward a report to really name and to identify who are the people who are most marginalized in this community. And then be able to build up rather than building from the top, building with community. And I know what it's like to be marginalized. I know that as, you know, being a black woman, growing up in a working-class community, and also having to come from the foster care system. So for me, these things are directly important to me. But also as an educator, in order for me to have a clear roadmap about what to do, I need to first be able to have a clear understanding of who are the most folks who are considered to be marginalized in our community.
Thank you very much. So question six. We'll start this time with Lorraine. Lorraine, the question is, how do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint?
I guess I'm not understanding the question. Can you hear me? Hello?
I, yes, I can hear you fine. I, I, I don't know exactly how to help you frame the question. Would you like to have us come back to you or
Yes.
repeat it again?
Yes.
Well, the question is, how do you intend to improve Pomona's environmental footprint?
Can I go?
Yeah. Miranda, would you like to answer that question?
Yes. I am very big about environmental justice and particularly environmental racial justice in our communities. And I think that on a local level, we have the opportunity to be able to address this in real time. And I think that there has been a lot of great collaborations and groups that have been doing this. The number one thing for me, when asked about addressing environmental concerns in our community, is first going to the local grassroots frontline community groups to help us inform our decisions. Right now, we have a United Voices for Pomona that has been very instrumental with putting together different environmental toxic tours. And I believe those are great things for our community to be aware of what the issues are. I also think that cleaning green is another great example of how they have been able to utilize and activate the community. And I would really rely on these groups to help us understand how we can not only just eliminate our carbon footprint, but also be able to address the racial justice issues, particularly in South Pomona, where we have a lot more density of related environmental health issues for our community. Those would be the things I would want to do as a future council member for our district.
Thank you. Glenda, same question?
The city recently received a Strategic Growth Council grant, and that is a great place to start greening Pomona. The city's also increased its parks fees to developers. And this is what we should be utilizing to create more green space. I believe that working with our states and local officials, that we can access more funding to create a Pomona that is reimagining and investing in our parks, to give residents the access to these green spaces and investing in our infrastructure to open up to open up more facilities, services, and education around reducing our carbon footprint and in investing in renewable energies and how we as individuals can help out with that, even as the city is doing everything that they can on a more macro scale. But of all the steps that we can take to reduce our carbon footprint, the biggest one that we can do is expand and create more green spaces here in the city of Pomona.
Oh, wait.
Barbara, you're muted.
Yeah. We didn't hear, I didn't hear what you said.
I'm sorry. Lorraine, would you like me to repeat the question?
No, I think I understand it now.
Okay.
With environment, you know. I believe that we need to develop more programs to invest in our families in terms of like solar sys, the solars, to install solars, better water reserve. We need to invest in even charging stations, invest in cleaner air, invest in the, in order to develop a more effective program, efficient program for cleaner air. I think it's important. I don't think we do much of that in Pomona. I think that we are trying to develop, like we have a lot of programs at different locations where we have, we're teaching people how to grow their own food. Lopez Farm, I think is a great opportunity for us to invest even more in more areas, not just in that one location. I think that our trees need to be better maintained because a lot of our trees are dying. And, and so that, I think, has a lot to do with cleaner air. Not understood.
Thank you very much. So this is question seven, and it's our last question. And we'll start this question with Glenda. Glenda, as more and more issues such as housing, transportation, and the environment require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other governmental agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
Well, as I said before, I am no stranger to working with with different levels of government. So I definitely want to be working collaboratively with our surrounding cities, working with the state, be it the Assembly or the Senate, and working with our Congress representative to bring resources into the city. In particular, there are regional issues that we have, like homelessness is not unique to Pomona. But that's something that we can work on and be a leader for in our area if we just have the vision to do that. And also, what we need to do is make sure that we are creating the best infrastructure within the city to be able to put our most professional face forward when we are dealing with other agencies. So whether that is empowering city staff or asking them how best they can be supported so that, at the end of the day, they're the ones that are doing the legwork. I can have an idea, but I then have to rely on city staff to follow through on that idea and make that happen. So if they're not being supported and they're not ready to go out the gate, then we're already starting behind. So I want to make sure that the city is in a place where they're able to secure grant funding and take the city forward before we can even start looking to the other agencies to bring stuff in.
Thank you very much. Lorraine, would you like me to repeat the question? As more and more issues, such as housing, transportation, and the environment require regional solutions, how will you approach working with other governmental agencies to meet Pomona's needs?
Definitely, I will work to try to investigate on other cities and see what programs they are offering that are improving their city and try to see how we can bring those particular programs and investment into Pomona, especially with developing programs for our seniors, for our youth, for businesses, for the unhoused. I think we have to look at what works elsewhere and how we can see how it can better Pomona. I think we need to invest in programs for our city hall so that they are better equipped to deal with some of the concerns, better business atmosphere. If the citizens of Pomona have some concerns, they will be able to address the issues better. If we invest in our community, we will have a better opportunity to grow as a community. I think that working locally and regionally with state and the businesses that are effective, I think that we can better address the concerns.
Thank you. Miranda?
Yes, for me, I find this to be a very, very important concern. I have already, right now, been in a relationship with our local regional partners in helping to address these concerns. So in my previous roles, I, I know what it's like to push something on a local level and have a policy to meet a need, but then also be able to carry that to become like a state policy as well. And a lot of this was my work that I did to help address issues for those who are formerly in the foster care system. So I know, I have that experience of working with people on multiple levels. I will say that for me, when I am thinking about our regional partners and why this is important is because it gives us an opportunity to show what collaboration looks like. And I know what it's like to be able to do that in real time. One of the things that I really want to stress is that, right now in the city of Pomona, we have a really great opportunity not to only collaborate around the issues that are affecting us on a global stage, but also to be able to collaborate in a direct way to address all of our concerns. And I have that experience.
Thank you very much. It's time now for closing statements. You have, each of you has two minutes for your closing statements, and we'll start with Lorraine. Lorraine, you need to unmute yourself.
Okay, I understand that there is a lot to learn in, in policies, in business. And, but I will do my research and I will reach out to those in the community who have expertise in the field. I will take the knowledge and continue to, and contribute my findings to make appropriate decisions. I will be transparent to the community. I will build better relationships with the families, business partners, and the school system. I will, I believe that better communication and transparency with the community is important to move the city forward. Most importantly, ensure that all voices will be heard. I truly love Pomona and I want to see it thrive. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lorraine. Miranda, your closing statement?
To anyone that's watching this wherever you are right now and while you're viewing this and you are asking the question, what sets Miranda apart from these other candidates? I want to let you know, the main thing that sets me apart is that I have been doing the work. If you want to know about housing and the issues around that, as a board member of Pomona United for Stabilized Housing, I have been doing the work to work with our city council. That has been what I have been able to do. I have served on commissions. I have served our community. I also have the background and the knowledge to be able to bring people together and to be able to collaborate. You being able to hear directly from me and being able to hear what I want to be able to do is to directly a support, not just for our current situations we're moving into, but also for our future. So I am very thankful for the opportunity to be able to come and to tell you about my platform and about who I am and why I am the best choice for District Six. Thank you.
Thank you, Miranda. Glenda, your closing statement?
Thank you again for putting this on. So I appreciate us having the opportunity to say this. As a city commissioner here in the city of Pomona, I've gotten very familiar with some of the processes that we use here at the city. I've also been an active member for the last several years of the Pomona Valley Democratic Club. Currently their president. And regardless of anyone's party affiliation, at the end of the day, we all represent Pomona. So as your council member, I would represent the needs and wishes of the people here in Pomona to make the most, the most, to make the best decisions possible, to give us the best outcomes. Currently endorsed by several of the council members, and I think that that's very important because at the end of the day, as a council, we have to work together collaboratively to make anything into policy. So to produce good policy, I have the relationships where I can build on and even push when I feel that we're not going in the right direction. You need to be able to have those tough conversations, and I'm willing to do that. On top of that, it was here in Pomona that I was given the opportunity at a career and starting at the State of Brothers Angari and Alvarado. And it was there that I also saw the day-to-day struggles that people have. We saw the homeless people right outside. They were getting high on drugs or just in a bad way. The safety issues involved with that, you see it every single day. And I might not have fancy degrees. I do have an associate's degree, and I do want to continue my education. But my life experience, I've struggled to get to where I am today, and I'm proud of that. It's made me who I am. And I don't want to discredit anything about my story, about who I am, about the fact that I'm a renter here in Pomona. There's nothing wrong with that. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. On behalf of the League of Women Voters of the Mount Baldy area, I want to thank everybody who's here tonight. And I want to thank everybody who's watching this. Our goal in the League of Women Voters is to encourage everybody to vote, vote, vote. Encourage your neighbors to vote, encourage your neighbors to encourage their friends to vote. We also want people to be as educated about what's on the ballot as they can. And so these forums are a part of our way of doing that. We also want our audience to know that you can go to a website called vote411.org and get information about candidates, about voting sites, about all kinds of information that you need for voting. So I thank everybody for being here. And I say, good night.